Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Planning and Highways Committee meeting. Normally at this point, we go around the room and ask members to introduce themselves, but I'm going to pinch with pride from another committee meeting that I was in last week, and they just asked members to make sure that their nameplates were visible and easily read from when they spoke, because the camera will turn around when you speak. So I'm not going to go around the room, that's a bit clunky, but for the benefit of those people that are viewing online or looking into this meeting, can you make sure your nameplates, your name tags are visible, please? Let me grab my agenda. The first item on the agenda is welcome and housekeeping arrangements. Over to you, Abi.
Thank you, Chair. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times, please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting, and do not congregate around exits and entrances, and please follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast, and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Abi. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair, we've got apologies from councillor Peter Price, and councillor Mike Chaplin is substituting.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any items on the agenda that warrant the exclusion of public or press.
No, Chair.
Does any member have any declaration of interest to make? I can see shaking heads, so I'm going to take that as a no. Okay? So we will go through on to the minutes of the previous meeting that are in your pack between pages nine and 12. Can someone nominate them as a true record? Thank you, Peter. And have I got a second of the... Thank you, Chris. Right, I'm going to go through them for matters arising, page by page. So page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12. No matters arising. So our first new item of business on the agenda is, we will agree that the date of the site visit is being held in members' diaries, and we will agree when we know what items we've got on the next meeting of this committee, which sites fit the criteria for visits. So you'll be advised of that by Abi in due course. And now I'm going to hand over to Sam and ask him to present a report on the tree preservation order.
Right, so basically, my colleague who's now left the department, Peter, served the TPO back in April of last year. His property was part of Green Hill Conservation Area, so the fact they're in a conservation area means they need to be notified as we're removing the tree. Peter went out to site, made an assessment using the TEMPO, which is a kind of industry standard assessment of trees, and it's good enough to warrant a TPO. So you have to serve a TPO if an applicant, if it's a conservation area and they want to take the tree down, if you refuse it, you have to then serve a TPO. You can't kind of say, "No, you can't," and just leave it like that. So we had to serve a TPO. The only objection we got was from the owner of the tree, all of whom's objections have been responded and fought by Peter. I went to site last week to check on the tree and have a look at it myself, and I agree with everything Peter said, really. It's a very healthy-looking tree. It's part of the original building, the manor up there, which is a listed building, and is part of the sort of structure of Green Hill Conservation Area. So I would argue that, yeah, it should be protected and retained for the TPO.
Thank you, Sam. Do we have any members' questions? Council Davidson.
Good afternoon. I couldn't help resisting this particular one, because he was belong to an ex-lawd there in Sheffield in his house. That was quite a long time ago.
Roger, could I ask you to put your microphone on, please?
Sorry, I do apologise. And interestingly, the tree is a very, very old tree. The photographs look as if they're very close to the wall, but am I assured from the one that was took by the council from Google with an X, how far is that from the wall? Because it looks further away than the photographs that the proprietor has shown.
Sorry, are you meaning the photos that I submitted last week? And where the applicants... Yeah. I mean, I did knock on the door, but nobody was in, so I couldn't really gain access. But it's a fair distance away, I would, you know, on the basis of Peter's report, he's said that it's not showing any structural damage to any boundary treatments or the house itself. So I think it's far enough away not to warrant, you know, any claims against damage or anything like that. And the applicant themselves has not said it's causing damage, they just want to take it down, because they think it's too big. But, I mean, it's a lime tree, it's meant to be big.
Well, I'm interested in the roots of it.
I do apologise. Yeah, the distance of the roots away from the wall, because it's nearer the wall than it is, oh, the boundary, than it is the house, is that right?
Yeah.
And the roots are not going to damage the wall?
They're not at the moment, so they've been there for 200 years, so I wouldn't have thought they'd be there.
Okay, that's okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Any members' comments? So I see no requests for comments. What we're asked to do here is to seek confirmation of the tree preservation order number 441. I'm going to go around the room and call upon members individually to see if they support that recommendation. So I will start, as normal, with councillor Peter Garbutt.
Yes, I support the recommendation.
Councillor Brian Homshaw.
Yes, I support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Chris Ross in Josephs.
Support the recommendation.
Councillor Tony Dams.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Mike Chaplin.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Zehira Nas.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Andy Sanga.
Support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Bob McCann.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Gary Wetherall.
Thanks, Chair, support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Alan Wood... I'm sorry, I can never remember your surname. Alan.
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you. And finally, last but not least.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I support the recommendation.
Thank you very much. So that motion is passed. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, Sam. We now go on to the applications under various ACX and regulations, and we have two applications put before us today. The first application is number 21/01928FUL. It's a Silver Lodge residential care home, and the location is 12 Housley Lane, Sheffield S35, 2UD. I'm going to call upon the officer to give us a brief report on this, a brief roundup of this report, and I'm going to ask if we can have the relevant presentation slides, please. Are you controlling those slides, Adam? Or is it Claire?
I've got no control over the slides, no.
Yeah. Can we go through to the first presentation and the next slide, please, Claire? Adam, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to the former Silver Lodge care home, which has been vacant, which we think for a couple of years now. It's a fairly substantial building, two stories, which has been adapted and altered over the years, and there's a large modern extension to the rear. The site's approximately 0.3 hectares in size and is in a housing area in the unitary development plan. The site itself is covered by tree preservation order, so there's some large mature trees on the site frontage, and some to the rear which are protected. None of those proposed to be removed as part of this application. There's some minor works externally to remove some conservatory to the building, and some external stairways, and a access lobby, and to replace those with a new access lobby, some slightly readjusted staircases, and an external decking area to the rear for the amenity of residents. There's 14 car parking spaces proposed, and we've got 10 flats, nine of which are two-bed, and one is a one-bed unit. If I could draw members' attention to the supplementary report, there's a couple of changes to conditions, just various small amendments to the wording. So condition two, which lists the approved plans, has just had a slightly updated roof plan added. Condition 10 has been just slightly reworded to remove reference to pruning of a tree, and that relates to report clarification as well, is that this planning application does not authorise any works to prune the existing TPO trees within the site. None of the trees need to be pruned to facilitate the development, so if the developer wishes to make any alterations to the trees in the future or maintain them, they would need to make a separate tree application. And there's a slight report correction as well, and a drafting error on page 60, which is the ninth paragraph on that page, which relates to the consistency of the plans. That's it, Chair.
Thank you, Adam. Could we go through the pictures and just... Claire, could you click through the slides? Adam, I don't know if there's anything you want to bring to members of the table?
I can just run through them if you want, Chair. Yeah, so this is the site plan. Site's edge red, as you can see, it's quite a substantial building and mature grounds. Next slide, please. That's just the overhead photo showing the surrounding residential context as well as the site. Next slide. Front elevation of the building, as you can see, it's not in great condition at the moment, and it's deteriorated a little bit. The staircase that you can see at the front there will be removed, and some of those door openings will be joined into one long window opening on the frontage. The rest of that front elevation will just be tidied up with new fenestration detailing. Next slide. That's the rear elevation, you can see the conservatory to the right, which will be removed. Next slide. This is to the side of the property, and this is where the parking area would be. In the distance, you can see the bin store, which is retained as it stands at the moment, those structures just in front of it, which are a outside toilet and a meter cabinet to be demolished. Next slide. That's just a picture of the rear amenity area. This is the neighbouring property to the north, they're at a slightly higher level, and that's a porch area to the side of that property. Next slide. Again, these are just some pictures of the existing building within the courtyard area at the back. And here we have the proposed plans. Just for ease, members are pointing towards the blue windows are either new openings or slightly amended openings. There isn't a substantial amount of new openings within the building, they've tried to make use of what's there at the moment. And you can see the lobby on the side elevation in the very top left-hand corner. That's the new lobby, which is proposed. Next slide. That's the internal layout. As said, majority of flats are two-bedroom, there's one one-bedroom, which again is your top left-hand corner of the plan. The smaller plans at the bottom are additional bedrooms related to a couple of the flats. One is in the roof space, and one is at a low embasment level, but does have outlook from a window. Next slide. And that is the site plan. The dark grey areas are the sections of the building that are to be removed. You see the parking areas to the front and to the side. Is there another one? And this is the TPO plan. So this is showing the protection of the trees during the construction works. That's it, Chair.
Thank you, Adam. We have one speaker for this application, a Mr Gavin Ward. Can we invite him into the room, please? Mr Ward, welcome. If you press the button on your console, you will see a red light appear, and that will link you in with the microphone system. You have five minutes to make your report at your convenience.
Thank you, Chair. I'll certainly not be five minutes. Good afternoon, my name is Gavin Ward, and I am the scheme architect, and thank you for letting me speak to you all. We have worked hard with your officers to amend and improve the scheme since submission to arrive at the proposal before you today. We are pleased that it's had a positive recommendation. The proposed conversion of a building in a residential area to residential use is very strongly supported by and consistent with planning policy. The proposal is highly sustainable, it is a brownfield development involving the reuse of an existing building with minimal external work to give it new life, rather than knocking it down and starting again with new materials. It will add variety and choice to the local housing stock. The site is within easy reach of the shops, services and train station in the middle of Chapel Town. Bus service is run from the bottom of the road. For these reasons, the principle of the scheme should be acceptable. With the care home business having long relocated, it is important that a new use is found for the site. This proposal achieves that in a sustainable manner and will make an important contribution to Sheffield's housing supply, noting the current shortfall in that regard. Planning policy highlights the importance of delivering new homes in this manner. As such, it is not the principle of the proposal we have worked on with your officers, but rather the detail. We have taken on board their advice at every stage and incorporated their requirements into the scheme. For example, we have reconfigured the car parking to ensure existing mature trees are retained. We have also reduced the number of apartments from 14 to 10 to lower the density of the scheme and ensure the units are generously proportioned. The parking ratio is more generous than for other apartment schemes approved by the council in Chapel Town. There are no outstanding design points we have not attended to. It is understandable that with any proposed change, there is a degree of concern from local people. Again, though, because the proposed external works are so limited, we will not be bringing the building closer to people's houses. The committee report correctly notes that vehicle movements generated by the scheme will be less intensive than those associated with the previous care home. When operating as a care home, in addition to care, management and ancillary staff arriving in shifts, and visitors for up to 32 residents, there was also traffic associated with food and healthcare deliveries, hygiene services, specialist waste collection, wide-ranging medical services and entertainment. Traffic associated with 10 apartments will be much less than this. The proposal is supported and encouraged by policy and is highly sustainable. No adverse impacts are identified. It will make an important contribution to the housing supply, and we hope you are able to support it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr Ward. I'm going to hand over to members now for questions. I've got Jay wanting to escort our speaker out, that's brilliant, thank you. I'm going to hand over to members now for questions. Councillor Sanga.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I did find the site visit very useful. So just go back to this issue about Housley Lane, so it's unadopted, but the condition of it is clearly a bit of a mess. So at what stage could one put in a condition or a directive that if we were to, as part of this application, that the condition of Housley Road should be improved?
Helen, would you like to come in?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, it is an adopted public highway, which is basically, means that the properties that front the lane are responsible for the maintenance of it. I think it's difficult to put in a condition which would require the developer to make up the road, as obviously they're not in control of the land, so it isn't actually in their gift to carry out that work. A directive could be included, which could encourage them, but certainly it wouldn't be something that we would be able to condition. Thank you, Chair.
Is that okay, Councillor Sanga? Okay. I've also got Gary Wetherall, councillor Wetherall.
Yes, thanks, Chair. And thanks, officers, very detailed summing up you've put into this report. I went up on my tod other day, it's a beautiful part of our city where this is, and same with councillor Sanga, you know, the road is, you know, going to be an uplift, but there's nothing we can do about it being an unadopted road, I know that, but anyway, that's been answered. Just on the Ecclesdale Parish Council bit, on page 50, Chair, I'm looking through, and I don't quite agree with, you know, what they're saying about the vehicle access. I just wonder if I could, you know, because I found it, you know, difficult, but there again, if there's only going to be a few cars coming in and out there, and it's not a well-used road, anyway. But I have got a bit of concern about that, Chair, thanks.
Helen, would you like to come in?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's fair to say, obviously, that the access as it stands at the minute isn't up to the current day standards. However, I think what we've got to bear in mind is that when it was previously used as a care home, as the architect said, it's likely that they would actually generate more traffic than the current proposal. I mean, in terms of the current proposal, we would estimate something in the order of about 40 vehicular movements a day, which is probably three to four in the peak hour. And I would venture to suggest that with staff, the servicing and everything of the previous use, that would be considerably higher than that. So whilst I think, yes, it isn't up to the current day standard, it obviously has functioned probably with a higher level of traffic without a problem, so it would be unreasonable to suggest that the access wasn't acceptable for the current proposal. Thank you, Chair.
Is that okay, councillor?
That's fine, thank you, Chair. I knew that answer was going to be there, anyway.
The next speaker we have is councillor Peter Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. And it is again about the road, so it's for you again, Helen. I'm aware that there's not much building going on in here, but I still think there will be some heavy traffic. A lot of the ground will need laying for parking and cars, so there will need to be some heavy traffic on there. The road is narrow, the road is not made up, there is a portion of it that is tarmac and a portion of it that's less than tarmac. I think this heavy traffic will probably have a really bad effect on it, so your answer to councillor Sanga, that we could put a directive in there, I would heavily suggest that this is desirable to do so. So I don't know if you have any views on whether or not this heavy traffic would in fact cause problems on the road.
Sorry, thank you, Chair. I think there's probably two separate things in terms of making the road up to an adoptable standard and requiring the developer to do that for the development. But, I mean, what we could potentially do, although defer to Adam, is actually put a condition on about a dilapidation survey, which would mean that basically the condition of the road, I appreciate, not brilliant at the minute, but a survey would be done of that to make sure that at the end of the day, the construction traffic didn't make it things any worse, and that obviously if any significant damage was done, that would have to be remediated, and I think that would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Helen. Adam, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, Chair, just to come in on that. We normally cover that by directive rather than a planning condition, and given that we've got a length of road here that's owned by various different frontagers, the developer would have to seek the agreement of all those frontagers to undertake any work, so it wouldn't be something we could enforce. We could put a directive on to encourage the applicant to do that, but we could not enforce it if they couldn't recede the agreement of the other owners.
Is that okay, councillor Garbutt?
It seems to be slightly different from what Helen said, but is there some way we can make that either a condition or a directive?
We can, sorry, we can put a directive on in terms of the construction traffic, so for the dilapidation survey, to ensure that we understand fully the state of the road before they start, and obviously then it would be resurveyed when the construction had been completed. And so if there were issues, then the developer could mitigate those measures or provide remedial measures, yeah.
Yes, Chair, that's correct, but again, just point back to the landowner issue. If those landowners weren't willing to cooperate, then the developer wouldn't be able to, you know, put back those, any potholes or anything like that. But I can't imagine they wouldn't, and the directive is something we normally put on most applications, so it's something we can put on, yeah, if you see fit.
Right, so I know I've got other speakers indicated, but I've got a lot of nodding heads around the room, so are we going to take that directive will be included in the recommendations when we come there? Yeah, okay, great. In that case, I will proceed then to my next speaker, which is councillor Richard Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I noticed in the report that you mentioned that two of the apartments are below the standard guidelines for space. Are you able to just detail how much below they are, and whether they are one- or two-bedroom departments? Thank you.
Chair, just briefly, yeah, the reference to below standard is the reference to the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide. Now, that isn't policy, that is just a recommendation, the council did not adopt it as policy, so there's no requirement to meet those standards as part of this development. Generally, if I can give a bit of an overview of the spaces within the site, the smallest flat is approximately 42 square metres, and that is the one-bedroom unit. The largest of the flats is 126 square metres, and predominantly the remainder of those flats are between 70 and 90 square metres in size, so they are fairly so they are fairly decent apartments in that regard, and officers are satisfied that the amenities of residence will be satisfactory.
Is that okay, Richard?
No, thank you, that detail was important, thank you.
And the final speaker who's indicated a question is councillor Brian Homshaw.
Thank you, a couple of questions. Firstly, just following coming back on what Adam's just said there, how far precisely below the suggested space standards is the one-bedroom flat? If you could do a comparison there. I'm running out of time just to look for that, Adam. Secondly, I'm a little bit concerned about the closeness of some of the neighbours to the construction work, particularly number thirty, which is quite close on the map. Can we suggest that the construction work, as far as possible, largely takes place on the other side of the building where the neighbours are less close?
Adam, would you like to come in, please?
Chair, I'm just looking at the report, I can't give you the exact figures on the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide, unfortunately, but as I said, officers are very comfortable that the amenities of residence will be completely satisfactory, and given that this is a conversion scheme, we do have to be a little bit flexible in those standards as we're bringing a building back into use. Obviously, as part of the scheme, we've reduced the numbers from fourteen to ten, so we have increased the size of majority of those units. In relation to the comment about construction, I don't think we could insist that the works take place on a particular side of the building. Obviously, the developer will be working all around the building, and there's various alterations to different parts of the building, to install windows, surfacing and an extension to the building, so it would be quite difficult to manage that, and I would say it might be unenforceable from a planning perspective.
Brian, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just to be clear, what I really intended to say was construction traffic, so rather than moving round the side toward number thirty, it would be over the other side, although of course that would also have impacts on that neighbour as well.
Yes, Chair, I think, having been to site and a couple of members were there yesterday, it would be very difficult for any vehicle of any size to get down the side of the property. So we would envisage that majority of those deliveries and construction vehicles would be pulling up on the site frontage, which is very open and clear, dropping off and then leaving. I don't think there would be a need for any substantial amount of construction equipment that would require us really to put conditions on.
Do you want to come back, Brian, is that satisfactory? Okay, I'm going to open it up to members' comments now, and I've got a question right now, let you squeeze in under the wire, councillor McCann.
Yeah, I'd often missed that on the report, but is there any plans for any charging points being put in the parking areas, given that a lot of electric vehicles coming on the road now?
Chair, no, there isn't actually, no, there's no condition to that effect. It is a small-scale development, but if the developer was willing, it is something that we could condition, we would need to have a word with them about it, but if members felt it was absolutely necessary, then yes.
So was that a proposal, councillor McCann? What does the meeting feel about that? First of all, have you got a second of that? Oh, councillor Wetherall. Did you want to speak?
Oh, I'll second that from councillor McCann, it's a great idea, I think we should encourage that in all applications, Chair, thank you.
Do I need to do a roll call, can we, a show of hands, is that okay? So a show of hands for those in favour. And that is unanimous, so, Adam, can we add that to the list as well?
Yes, Chair, I agree the wording of that with you directly.
Yeah, we will work on the wording after the meeting, if the meeting is happy to do that. Yeah, okay. Right, over to comments now then. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is an acceptable use or change of use of this property, as it's been standing empty for two years, and I accept the arguments that it won't actually have as much traffic, or it's unlikely to have as much traffic as its previous life. So yes, I'll support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. I've got councillor Peter Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be supporting this, I think what we've done here today has actually improved something that's already a fairly good proposal, so with the two amendments that we're making, I'm very happy to support this.
Thank you. I also have an indication, councillor Williams, did you indicate, all right, Andy, I've got your hand as well, so councillor Andy Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. I shall be supporting the officer's recommendation on this one. I think it's really good that we're getting an old building back into use without having to demolish it and build on the site, and I think the architectural changes will actually make it look better, I think they remove some of the unnecessary features that it needed when it was a care home. I think also the officers and the developers have done a really good job in terms of reducing from ten to fourteen, I think therefore we have fewer problems in terms of the space issue, so I think officers and developers have done a really good job in terms of coming up with a compromise in terms of ten apartments, and I think as Peter Garbutt has just said, that the two things we've just said in terms of the charging points for electrical vehicles and doing what we can in terms of Housley Lane, I think we've made good improvements there, so I'll be supporting it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. I have no more members that wish to make a comment, so we'll go through for the vote, which I will actually do on a roll call. So the office recommendation is to grant conditionally, so for the reasons set out in the report and with the additional directive and the condition that the wording will be agreed between officers and myself after this meeting, that's the condition for the charging points, yeah. All those in favour? I'll go around the room again, starting with councillor Garbutt.
In favour, Chair.
Councillor Homshaw.
I'm happy to support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Chris Wilson-Joseph.
Agree the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Shandy Dan.
Agree the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Mike Chaplin.
For the recommendation.
Councillors here and now.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Gary Wetherall.
Agree the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Adam Woodcock.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Richard Williams.
Yeah, I support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Andy Sanger.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Bob McCann.
For the recommendation, Chair.
And councillor Roger Davison.
For the recommendation, Chair.
And that recommendation is passed, thank you very much. Now we'll go on to the second application that we're hearing on today's agenda. It is application number two-one-stroke-zero-one-eight-zero-eight-stroke-F-U-L, and the location of this application is at two-nine-eight Norton Lane, Sheffield, S eight-eight-H-E. Can I pass over to you, please, Chris, to present the report, and can I remind you, because Claire's new today, to give her the nod when you want to change the picture on the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, just run quickly through the supplementary report, item two on there, there's just two amended conditions to the ones which are listed. So condition two, it's a revision to the plan number, which is the first plan listed there, so it should read P three, not P two. And then condition twenty-two, it's a correction to require a six-metre setback of the gates within the access rather than ten metres, so six metres back from the back edge of footpath rather than the ten originally specified. So, Claire, if you want, I'll move on to the first slide, please. This one is just the general site location, and whilst we're here, it's worth just noting the location of the conservation areas that are either side of the site but not adjacent to it. So on the eastern portion of that plan, beyond School Lane and Norton Lane, is the Oaks Park Conservation Area, and the small building near the sort of triangular junction there, that lodge is a listed building. The building on the bottom side, also on the southern side of the red line, is a listed building, an individual building in its own grounds, and then the Norton Conservation Area is kind of off the page to the west. So as I say, the site isn't in the conservation area, it's fairly close to a couple, and there are listed buildings adjacent to the south and nearby to the east. So the next slide is an aerial photograph, showing the same but obviously with a bit more detail. And at this point, actually, no, probably, yes, at this point, I'll just, if you could leave that there, please, I'll just quickly run through a brief introduction. So the application is to demolish the single house that sits in the middle of the plot, or slightly towards the Norton Lane frontage, replace it with fourteen two-bedroom apartments in four blocks, four blocks in two pairs. The two pairs of blocks are linked by a glazed section, which you'll see on the drawings shortly. The two blocks which front Norton Lane are three-storey, and the two blocks which fall south within the site are four-storey. At that point, it's probably helpful to show the layout, but I'm afraid we'll have to skip through them a little bit, please, so if you're able to go to the end of the photographs, that would be helpful, please. There, no, the next one, please, sorry, yeah. So the plans are a little bit hard to read because there's a lot of information on them at this scale, but you can hopefully make out the two blocks at the front, they're the three-storey ones, and then the two blocks further into the site, which are four-storey. There are seventeen car parking spaces, which, again, you can hopefully pick out on those screens, so to the kind of south-west of the, well, there's an access road that runs along the western boundary, served by a new access onto Norton Lane, with the existing access on Norton Lane being closed. Then, as you come into the site, you turn immediately into a parking area, or you carry on into the second parking area, which is further down on the western side. The site's in a housing area in terms of the UDP, so the use is acceptable in principle. The other key issues are around design and scale of the building, living conditions for existing and future occupiers, and highway safety. And of course, in the design and scale consideration is the impact particularly on the listed building on the bottom side. And for reasons which I'll show you shortly, we've concluded there is no impact on that building or its setting. It's important to remember in this, that you'll note within the report, that we've reiterated that we don't currently have a four-year supply of housing, so the tilt-to-balance that comes from paragraph eleven in the MPPF is in play, and that means that we should be granting permission, we're directed to grant permission unless there are any adverse, unless any adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the scheme, and the benefits in this case being the provision of fourteen housing units at a time when we are low on supply. So if you, I'll show you the photographs at the end, if you won't mind, Claire, moving to the plan back above, the one above, sorry, the other direction. There, yeah. So that shows in some detail the access arrangement that is proposed, and you see the car parking spaces immediately as you come in, you can see the gates are set back by six metres, it has a access width of five and a half metres, which allows two vehicles to pass. The wall, you can see the double line showing the splay on the wall to the right-hand side to the east, and you can also see some dotted lines which show hopefully visibility displays. You'll see that the front corner involves removal of a section of wall there and the tree that sits in that position, and that is beneficial to highway safety because it allows for a better access, a better visibility, and it also improves as a by-product to some extent the visibility coming from the access road to the listed building, and to a small extent the flats adjoining. So if we can go down the slides now, please, so back to the layout, oh, sorry, the other So that's a slide which shows the general layout of the floors, one flat, one two-bedroom flat per floor, per unit. The next slide down shows an elevation, or the elevation, should I say, of the building, so they're built in stone, stone and render with zinc cladding. You can see on the image, the top image, to the right of the tree, that's the western-facing gable of the front block, and that is a green wall, there are green roofs on all four of the blocks, and so as I say, stone render, zinc cladding and timber cladding. The next slide down is various sections through the sites, you can see the relative heights, so although the buildings at the back are four-storied, they're actually not that much taller because of the slope in the land, which is almost, it's approaching a story height difference. And the next slide down, you can hopefully make out there, in red, an outline of the existing building on the site, its height, so you can see that it is the same as, if not ever so slightly taller than the three-story blocks that are proposed, you can see the two-story block to the left on the adjoining site, and the three-story block to the right on the adjoining site, which is slightly taller. I'm sorry about this, Claire, we're going up and down with these images, but if you can go back to the beginning of the photographs, please, I'll just quickly read through those. So that one is the house as it stands at present, it's a house built in the nineteen-fifties, as was the stone boundary wall on the front, we believe. That is the stone boundary wall on the front, the next slide showing the tree cover, the nearest tree there would be removed as part of the access works. The next slide is the back of the building thing from the garden. The next slide down is from School Close, I think it's called, the small access road to the west, and the conifer trees you can see there form the boundary of the site, and would, to a large extent, screen a good portion of the building, you would still see the building through them, but they would screen a good portion of the building, you also get a feeling for the scale of the adjoining buildings there. The next slide, they're the two-story units that are immediately to the west. The next slide is off Cypress Avenue on the bottom side, and you can just see peeking above those detached carriages there, the listed building. And it's perhaps not easy to tell from that image, but you can tell from that location that you wouldn't read the proposed scheme and the listed building in the same view. That's a view from Cypress Avenue of the listed building. That's a view from Cypress Avenue of the listed site, the listed building, and again, it's not seen in any street scene context. The next slide down is, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped on then, I was looking at my screen and not the one that was on there. So, that's the view of the listed building from Cypress Avenue. The next one down is the three-story Housing Association flats to the west of the site. The next slide down is the bottom of the garden, and you can just about pick out there the ridge between the trees, you can just about pick out the ridge of the listed building and the site beyond. The next slide down is not particularly helpful, I have to say, and just shows, is the, an image of the vegetation around the site. And if we go right to the very end, Claire, if you don't mind, there are a series of visuals, so if we just flick through these, you get an impression, I'll not comment on these, you just get an impression of the form the development would take. I think there's about eight or so of these. You can see the green wall on that one and the green roofs. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Right, that was a good whistle-stop tour around the application of the site. We have actually two speakers on this application. We have one speaker against, which is councillor Steve Ayres. Could we ask councillor Ayres to come into the room, please? Thank you. Sorry, Roger. I'm sorry, could you put your mic on, we can't hear. Councillor Ayres, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, I'm grateful, Chair, for-
You've got five minutes at your-
Sorry, I'm grateful for allowing me to speak on this application. Members will note from the report that there have been twenty-three formal representations, all objecting to the proposal, including one from myself, and significantly, one from the Chair of Governors on behalf of Norton Free School. I also requested a site visit for planning members, and I understand that took place yesterday. Chair, the application submitted is for fourteen two-bedroom apartments, and this is contrary to the pre-planning advice indicating twelve apartments, and represents a high-density, single-style, and intrusive over-development of the site footprint, lacking a mixed property type that does not sit comfortably with the street scene or with the overall temperament of the area. And I would argue a decision today would be a premature presumption of the emerging Sheffield Plan. The site is less than fifty metres from the Grade Two-listed Oaks Park Lodge at the entrance to Oaks Park, and forms a link between this and the nearby neighbouring Norton Conservation Area. Current properties on Norton Lane are of more traditional design, predominantly detached and semi-detached properties of one or two stories, consistent with the historical temperament of the immediate surrounding ancient hamlet dwellings in the area. Indeed, the proposed development would impact on the adjacent Chantry Cottage, Chantry House on Morgue Hay, itself a Grade Two-listed building under the planning, listed building and conservation areas at 1990 for its special architectural or historic interest, and I attached a map to my objection to show its listing. Chair, there's a potential impact from overlooking to properties on School Lane and Norton Lawns, and the report is unclear as to whether South Yorkshire Best Practice Guidance has been The governing body of Norton Free Church of England Primary School particularly have significant concerns over the unacceptable impact on traffic, highways and parking, and the safety of their pupils. Norton Lane's not a particularly wide road, but is a busy route, which the report acknowledges, connecting traffic from Blackstock Road with Jordanport, connecting traffic with Blackstock Road with Jordanthorpe Parkway, and has long been subject to road safety issues over horizontal alignment, queue management and control of the volume and speed of traffic, given the proximity to the bend at the entrance to Oaks Park, to the junction with School Lane, and to the zebra crossing to the school, and the Morgue Hay and Clunmore Drive bus stops. All these combined raise further concerns over the additional highway safety impact. So, finally, given the impact I've outlined on the overall infrastructure, I ask members to consider this a valid case for the proceeds of any SIL contribution to remain in the local area. In short, Chair, though, I ask members to refuse this application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Ayres. We also have another speaker in favour of this application, Mr Little. So, there'll be a break for a couple of minutes while councillor Ayres leaves the room and Mr Little comes in. Thank you, Jay. Mr Little, welcome to the Planning and Highways Committee meeting. The button on your console connects you to the audio system. Make yourself comfortable, you have five minutes at your convenience.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good afternoon. The present site at 298 Norton Lane consists of a large, single dwelling with detached garage and summer house in the grounds, which was originally built in 1958, and set in substantial ground behind a large stone perimeter wall. Immediately surrounding the site to the west and the east are two and three-story buildings containing apartments with housing in the wider area. To the rear of the site is Chantry House, which is a listed building. Whilst the listed building is viewed from the south and not read in the same context as this application site, care is being taken to ensure that it does not impact on its setting. As you'll be aware, the demand for housing has increased dramatically over recent years, and large plots of land with single dwellings have needed to be redeveloped where appropriate to provide multiple and varied types of housing to service the requirements and housing needs of that area. The proposed development of these fourteen dwellings will help the existing housing shout for shortfall of the area, and is a far better use of the plot in this location. The proposed scheme identifies 298 Norton Lane as a classic example of this need, and especially since Norton is desperately lacking quality two-bed properties to suit both young professionals and the increasing retired population, when downsizing to a property requiring low maintenance within mature private grounds. This proposal of a two-story, well, three-story block towards Norton, the Norton Lane boundary, and the block to the rear allows the natural topography of the site levels, and has been an important design factor. The overall height of the apartments fronting Norton Lane have been kept in line with the height of the original property. The proposed apartments are all eighty-five square metres, which is far greater than the seventy metres squared required by National Spatial Standards. The high-quality design includes proposed materials. Maintaining a convincingly coherent appearance, these materials include stone, zinc, cladding, render, aluminium, and living green walls. The proposed construction will be highly energy-efficient, which is of high importance, and especially to those potential owners who are keen on reducing their carbon footprint. Ten per cent of the development's energy needs will come from low-carbon energy, such as using solar panels located on the flat green roof, if required. The provision of electric car charging for residents is also included within this proposed scheme. The proposed vehicle access is to be relocated with the existing access blocks up using reclaimed stone from the existing wall. A 2.4 by 65-metre visibility display is shown on the proposed site plan, which is more than adequate for the size and speed of Norton Lane, I believe. Soft landscaping will surround the new accommodation and the associated parking. The stairwells are recessed into the buildings and constructed from glazing and lightweight materials, neatly separating the accommodation blocks. A landscaping scheme that retains as many of the existing trees and planting as been included within the application, and was undertaken by Waddell Landscape Design. The trees around the perimeter, originally planted saplings, have matured beautifully within the completely walled garden, which creates a very private ground for the occupiers, and equally private backdrop for all surrounding neighbours. The proposed scheme is designed to be attractive to residents working locally or in the city centre, as there is good proximity to the Ring Road and link the M1 and motorway network. The cycle routes to the city centre and the train station are also excellent. The proposed apartments have very good public transport links, with bus stops located in Norton Lane directly outside the site, serving the surrounding residential areas. The location also has great links to green local spaces such as Graves Park, and with the recent development of Graves Leisure Centre and St James's Retail Park, both only a fifteen-minute walk away, the location and geography of the proposed apartments would be attractive to all potential residents. The proposed development will bring new residents to the area who will contribute help to support local businesses, schools and the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr Little. Thank you very much, Claire. Right, I'm going to hand over to you now, Chris, for you to respond to those speakers.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just make a couple of comments on the first speaker's points, because I don't think there's anything to add to what the speaker for the scheme has said. So, I think just, there was mention of the proposed development being contrary to the pre-application advice for twelve units. The pre-application advice was given on a scheme for twelve units, but, and that was positive, and the developer chose to submit a slightly different scheme, and that's perfectly acceptable that people do that, Chair. We encourage pre-application advice, people don't always submit any, and indeed, sometimes they don't take it on board at all. But the fact that it is a different proposal to what was considered at pre-application stage has no bearing on a decision that we'd make today. There is also mention of it being premature in terms of local plan consideration, and I wasn't quite sure why that was being suggested. But we're in a situation, Chair, where we have to make planning decisions, and we're not, we don't have an imminent production of the local plan, so I don't think we can give any consideration to that particular point. Yes, the site is near, as I pointed out at the beginning, is near to Oaks Park or Oaks Lodge, the listed building fronting Norton Lane, but for the, and adjacent to the plot for Chantry House, or Morgue Hay as it's sometimes called, on the southern side. But we've set out two pages' worth of consideration of the impact on the heritage assets, Chair, on pages eighty-two to eighty-four, and we feel quite strongly that there's no significant impact at all on those heritage assets owing to distance and screening and their current I'll ask Helen at the end, if you won't mind, just to comment on the concerns about traffic, unless, Chair, you feel that they will come out in questions. In terms of the final point about SIL being spent in the local area, the council has an approved method of dealing with SIL, and any money that comes from the scheme in that regard would be spent in accordance with that. So, if you would like Helen to respond to any highways points, Chair, do that now, all through the questions.
Helen, would you like to come in now?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, obviously, there is going to be an increase in the number of vehicular movements to and from the site. Why, I would suggest that we'd be looking at between sort of fifty-five and sixty vehicular movements per day, which we believe can quite adequately be accommodated on the existing highway network. I think just to give a bit of comparison in terms of highway impact and additional traffic, we wouldn't look at requesting any sort of transport assessment, transport assessment, sorry, until we were actually looking at sixty additional vehicle movements per hour, this is about sixty per day, so I think that gives a scale of the development. In the peak hour, I would be looking at five to six vehicular movements, which, again, I think can quite easily be accommodated in terms of capacity and safety. In terms of highway safety, the access is designed, as the architect said, the visibility displays that are provided are actually in excess of both the Manual for Streets guidance and our own Sheffield City Council guidance, which would require a provision of 2.4 metres by forty-three metres. We have actually got available 2.4 metres by 65 metres, so that gives adequate visibility for vehicles emerging from the access, and also demonstrates that there's adequate forward visibility for vehicles on Norton Lane actually having sight of vehicles turning in. In terms of the access width, it's 5.5 metres wide, which is, again, more than adequate to serve a development of this size. A 5.5-metre width road is something that we would normally be looking at for maybe up to a hundred dwellings, so I'm giving this information in that, you know, this isn't something that's pinched down, that's on the margins of being acceptable from a highway point of view. It really does meet all the requirements that we would have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Helen. Right, I'm going to open the site up now for members' questions, and I've already had an indication from councillor Roger Davidson. Roger?
Thank you, Chair. I did ask the question sort of informally, I must, where is Norton Lane on there, is it the right or the left of the picture?
Just bear with me, Chair, I'm just checking I've got the correct image. You said right or left, it's neither, it's on the top side of the image. It's difficult to pick out, actually, it's on the top, it's on the top side of the image below that belt of trees.
Yeah, right. The image that you showed from, it must be Good Love, was a bit different to the one I was looking at myself this morning, because I couldn't see the building because it was covered with trees. Now, how many trees will be taken away in order to accommodate this new build?
Chris?
Chair, I don't have an exact figure, not very many, well, there are, in terms of the trees around the edges, the vast majority stay, and there'll be some additional ones planted as part of a landscape scheme. There is one tree in particular at the access point that I pointed out in the presentation that has been removed, but the rest, as members who went on the visit- that has been removed, but the rest, as members who went on the visit would note, were all concentrated predominantly around the edge, apart from a small row which is quite close to the house, internal to the site, and they would go. And I don't have an exact figure, but possibly half a dozen, so...
Do you want to follow up? Roger, is that okay?
Sorry, thank you for that question. Sorry, did you ask if I've got another one? Very quickly, it is much higher, or it is higher than the other buildings in the area. Why was that acceptable?
Chair, it's taller than the block to the west, which is the one at the very top of that image that's there now, but it's actually lower than the one to the west, which is the one on the left-hand side of that picture. And then the blocks which are, the three-storey blocks are the equivalent height of, sorry, the four-storey blocks are broadly equivalent to the height of the neighbouring three-storey blocks that contain a pitch roof, so the ridge height of the pitch roof is broadly equivalent to those of the flat roofs and the parapets on these. And we think that works quite well, we think it fits comfortably within that. It is a different form, because it's flat roof rather than pitch roof, but we don't think that's unacceptable, we think it's an attractive form of development that is, it fits comfortably in that location because of the presence predominantly of the neighbouring flat developments. We also don't feel it's a site that, notwithstanding that, or it's not a building, or buildings that will be hugely visible from public areas outside the site. So for those reasons, that's why we consider it acceptable, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, thank you. I now have councillor Peter Garbutt. Peter?
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions, totally unrelated to each other. The first one is about the bicycle storage, which comes between the two blocks of two buildings, I believe. The first one about the bicycle storage is, is it secure storage? Is it lockable, et cetera? And the second bit is, are you going to be providing, or is a developer going to be providing, electric bike charging points, as they will be electric car charging points? I'm very well aware that in Sheffield, although I'm not a bike rider, it's quite difficult to get around unless your bike is electric. So that's the first question. The second is about the egress, and again, I appreciate what you've been saying about the safety of it, but here we've got three roads exiting onto Norton Lane practically next to each other. We've got this one from this development, we've got Morgehay, and we've got the flats to the west, whose road also exits onto there, and shortly after that, we have the, when I say shortly, I'm talking about a matter of metres, we have the crossing, the school crossing. It's used a lot at, you know, early morning when schools going in and mid-afternoon when schools coming out. I know this because I use the road quite a lot and have experienced the difficulties around that crossing. Also, it's equipped with bellicia beacons which do nothing, really, and I was wondering if there was an ability of changing those to lights rather than a bellicia beacon. So, two-part question. First, those three roads all going into Norton Lane, very, very close together and nearer a crossing, and secondly, is it possible to have those bellicia beacons changed to traffic lights?
Okay, thank you, Peter. Chris, I think you'll probably want to answer the first question, then I'll pass it across to Helen for the second question.
Thank you, Chair. So the bicycle storage, yes, it will be secure, and there wouldn't, I wouldn't expect there to be electric bike charging points, because they essentially just plug in in a normal manner, and a bike can be kind of wheeled inside someone's flat, there are lifts, et cetera, that will accommodate that, and it's a relatively quick process, is my understanding. Whereas a vehicle obviously is a larger thing that can't go inside anybody's property and has to stand outside in a position where it can be charged. The second point, yeah, I will ask Helen to respond to, please, if that's okay.
Can I pass across to you, Helen, please?
Thank you, Chair. I think the question is that, yes, we have, well, we've got two existing, no, sorry, I'm going to refer to that, we've got three accesses at the moment, we're going to have one closed, and then a new access, which is going to be more frequently used, and is that acceptable in context of the other roads that exist coming into Norton Lane at the minute? I think the answer to that is yes. One, that is because it meets all the guidance in terms of visibility, with pedestrian vehicle into visibility, forward visibility. The other thing is that it is going to be a relatively likely trafficked access. As I say, we're looking at probably five or six vehicular movements in the AM and PM peaks throughout the day, less than that. So basically, given those factors, yes, I appreciate that, you know, Norton Lane is relatively heavily trafficked, but given those factors, given the fact that the design of the access meets all our requirements, we do think it can operate safely. In terms of the proximity to the crossing, again, if it was a case that the vehicles were emerging and they didn't have sight of the crossing, that would be something that we may have some concerns about. That isn't the case. The view of the crossing and people using the crossing is good as people are coming out of that access. So yes, we do feel that it can operate safely in the context of the existing highway and the highways that come to join Norton Lane at that point.
Thank you, Helen. Peter, is that? Yep, okay. I've also had councillor Andrew Sanger indicate.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, I want to go back to this vehicular access thing, and just try to understand in terms of the original design whether the original access was considered, because I'm still concerned about the fact that we're moving from one which was very much in the centre of the plot to one which is, you know, on the western edge next to the drive to Morgehay. And I think the other point, while we're on that subject, and I've heard a lot about, talking about, Chris talking about the setting of the listed building, you know, obviously further to the south, but in terms of the lane itself, that's not in any way listed, is it? It's just a drive to the property. I mean, I say, just when we were there, I mean, Norton Lane was very busy, and it just, really to echo councillor Garbutt's point, it does seem strange to have three accesses next to each other, it just seems a strange layout choice.
Chris, would you like to respond?
Chair, the simpler one first probably, the access to the listed building itself, the access itself isn't listed at all, no, and neither is the wall that leads to it, as I think said at the beginning, it's, we believe it's part, it was built at the time of the construction of the house, the application site property. In terms of the access position, our role in a case like this is really to consider whether the proposed access is acceptable, rather than kind of necessarily question why they can't use the existing one. I think, as Helen said quite confidently, it is, the current one is acceptable. An expansion of the existing one might also be acceptable, if it could be made to work with the layout of the scheme, I don't know if it can or it can't actually, but, so, I think it's, I suppose from a decision point of view, in this particular case, I'm not suggesting we have a choice, really, it's a question of dealing with what is put before us as the proposal, and if we felt that was unacceptable, for whatever reason, then yes, we might encourage an applicant to consider an alternative position, including reuse of the existing one. But as it stands, the current one is very much acceptable in highway safety terms, and has no other significant impacts that, you know, that would outweigh the overall benefits of the scheme.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. My final indicator for questions is councillor Brian Homshaw.
So the two questions I wanted to ask was about the, well firstly, about the amount of amenity space at ground level. It mostly seems to be taken up by car parking, so there's very little in terms of a grassed area, a laundered area, a playing-out area for grandchildren that might visit. So that's my question about that, is that enough? It doesn't seem to me to be so. Secondly, I was going to ask about the trees on site. So currently, there's very little overlooking, potentially from out of the new buildings, because of the height of the conifers and cypress that are around. Now, are we confident that that is going to continue to be the case if we haven't got at this moment a full maintenance survey of what's going to happen, a full maintenance plan of what's going to happen? Because if those cypress, if those tall trees go, then the visibility both into and out of the site will change considerably.
Thank you, councillor. Chris, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The amenity space is concentrated, Claire, would you mind, do you have numbers on your slides, by the way, it might be easier? If you could go to number thirty, please, or thirty-one, it'll be in yours. Yeah, thank you. Again, apologies, this isn't the clearest in terms of, because of the amount of information on it to display, but the most significant area of amenity space is around the southern half of the eastern boundary, and along the southern boundary as it kind of wraps round the bottom there. And it's a combination of what would be grassland, or not grassland, grass, and a footpath link that would be created, almost a kind of a mini woodland walk that would be created through the trees. So we anticipate that being an attractive space. Properties do have balconies as well for such a private use, albeit, I accept, they're relatively small for things such as play or any kind of recreation. We feel that that is at an acceptable level, there's enough in terms of quantum of space, and also actually, as the speaker for the development said, there is a good amount of public open space nearby as well. So we are satisfied that the level of amenity provision, both in terms of external space and the quality of the units themselves, in terms of their space and outlook, is very good. So, talking about, that was the second point, and the trees do provide some cover at the moment. There is a tree protection condition that would secure during construction, et cetera, and a construction method that would enable the trees to be supported in the long term. There was a tree survey undertaken with recommendations on behalf of the applicant, which included areas of no-dig construction and things like that, so that will all be built into that consideration when it comes to doing with the condition, but, so yes, we are confident that they will stay. If there were any issues, or if there are any issues of overlooking from the site, they're extremely minimal in our view, and we feel that the scheme could almost exist in terms of overlooking and privacy concerns without the presence of the trees. That's because of the distances to the boundaries from the blocks. So for example, on that eastern side, from the four-storey blocks that are coming down the kind of the centre of the site, there's just over nine metres to the boundary, and that then overlooks an area of communal open space largely, rather than someone's private garden. And obviously, at the moment, there are trees that filter that view as well, and in the long term, there will be trees that filter that view. And other distances all the way around the site are quite comfortable in that regard. So we're happy with that, a level of amenity provision, and the trees will survive and will stay, and then protection that they do afford will continue, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Brian, is that acceptable? Briefly, please?
Of course. It's the height of some of the buildings, the visibility looking from, say, the third floor, where the cypress trees are not in existence, if that is to be the case, that's, it's that kind of thing I'm concerned about, particularly if you've got a listed building, two listed buildings within the area.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think the same point applies, the distance is more than achieved, our guidelines are more than achieved in all cases, so even where there to be some views through and over trees, they're at a distance or not facing sensitive, either at a distance that's acceptable or not facing sensitive windows and things like that on the adjacent buildings.
Is that okay, Brian? Roger, I saw you indicate, given this is your second bite at the cherry, can you be very succinct?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit deaf, I couldn't quite catch what you said there.
Please be brief.
Right, I will. Sorry. Chris, these buildings do look, from my point of view, quite ugly and out of character with the rest of the place. How far will they be shielded from public view by the trees or whatever foliage there is?
Chris, would you like to respond?
Yes, I will, Chair. I don't know if there's an, I'm just going to quickly look to see if there's an image that helps with the answer. Slide twenty-one, please, Claire. That's the view currently from Norton Lane. There will be, obviously, we're coming towards the end, or we've gone past the end, I think, of summer, and some of the leaves will disappear from some of these trees, one of the trees disappears, as I mentioned at the beginning. A large portion of the development will be screened, as is the existing dwelling. There is some more bulk than the existing dwelling towards the eastern side of the site, but the trees provide quite a significant screen to any obvious impact to any passerby or person walking by. In most views, you will have to look quite hard to get a very good view of the building, other than through the access, as you, because the access will be quite open. So limited views from, if you like, fairly concentrated points.
Okay, fine, thank you. I'm going to pass on to comments now, and I'm going to ask members to be fairly brief, simply because Chris has another place he needs to be, so I'd like to be able to release him to get to that in good time. My first syndicator is councillor Weatherall.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a very nice area for what we've got on this site, I think it blends in really well, it's what's needed for the area, the speaker came for, he really highlighted it, you know, if people's going to be downsizing, we need to build downsizing properties, and this just suits this area for this area. And this just suits this area for this area. And I think with the green roofs, the car charging and the cycle storage, it just ticks all the boxes, really, Chair, so I shall be for this.
Thank you, Gary. My next indicator was councillor Richard Williams. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I tend to agree with Gary. It's almost a fantastic application, but I have a real worry with one area of it. And that is the relationship between the block 4 to 6, which is on the eastern side of the front, and the property in Norton Lawns, 11 and 12. But it was obvious to me at the site visit that the bulk of 4-6 will have a significant impact on 11 and 12, which actually has windows facing a blank wall of 4-6. It's a shame, because if you look at that footprint, there's plenty of space on all the boundaries apart from that area. I believe that the 4-6 building will go just over a metre from the boundary, a little bit more maybe. And there isn't much land between 11 and 12 and the boundary, really. So I'm very concerned. And I'm concerned because for two reasons, apart from additional reasons. One, the building 4-6 moves forward slightly from the initial, the original building. And of course, the original building at that point was much lower and had a sloping roof which sloped towards 11 and 12. 4-6, because of its design, would be one large flat-roofed building. And it could be one point, something metres, at three storeys high from the boundary. So I think I have a real concern about that.
Thank you, councillor. The next comment is from councillor Andy Senga.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, councillor Williams has stolen my thunder. Yeah, I'm really struggling with this application. Most of the buildings along Norton Lane are pitched roofs, even the Housing Association flats. I think if we had a scheme that was a floor or half a floor with a pitch roof shorter, you know, or a floor shorter with these flat roofs, then I think I would be able to support it. But I just think it's slightly too massive for the site. I think it's just overbearing in terms of its setting. I accept the principle that we need to build on the site. I just think the developers tried to put too much on this site. I should say, if it was two floors at the front and three floors at the back, I would have no problem supporting it. But I think 3 and 4, I just think it's just overbearing for the site. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. My next speaker is councillor Bob McCann.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I don't see if we've got any choice but to support this because current regulation means we can't turn anything down, basically, which is a bit of a pickle. But my main thing is, you know, I see that architects these days only seem to be able to draw straight lines. Everything's square boxes stuck up like Lego bricks. And so I won't be supporting it, but it's very reluctant, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now move to the vote. And I'm going to go around the room and ask... The recommendation is to approve, is to grant conditionally. So for the reasons set out in the report, I'm going to go around the room and ask for members' vote. I'm going to start with councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. It's quite difficult. I think I'm going to go for it, but I do, that is with great reservations.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brian Homshaw?
There are some good aspects, but I'm afraid I'm not going to be supporting this recommendation.
Is that an abstention or a vote against?
It's a vote against, in this case.
Councillor Chris Wilson-Josephs?
For the application, Chair.
Councillor Tony Dams?
For the application, Chair.
Councillor Mike Chaplin?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Sahira Nas?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Andy Senga?
Against the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Bob McCann?
Reluctantly for the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Roger Davison?
Against the application, against the recommendation, sorry.
Councillor Richard Williams?
Against the application.
Councillor Alan Woodcock?
Against the application.
And councillor Gary Weatherall?
For the application, Chair.
Thank you. Abby, do we have a...? Abby's counting. That motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for your service, Chris. So you can be released now. Right, our last item on the agenda today is the Record of Planning Appeals, Submissions and Decisions. And I'm going to hand over to Adam, because I believe on this, even though we're just normally asked to note it, I think there's some information in this report that best speaking to. So, Adam.
Thank you, Chair. It's in relation to the second item, which is the 85 dwellings at Hollingbusk. Members will recall that this application was recommended for approval by officers and refused at committee in July 2020. Following that, there was a public inquiry held and the appeal was allowed. The site's located in the north side of Deepcar, on an area of kind of open space in the unitary development plan. There's some listed buildings adjacent to it as well. Now, the inspector found the majority of the council's policies to be inconsistent with the National Planning Policy Framework, in particular those policies around the protection of open space. And also, there's a specific policy here in the core strategy about safeguarding land that's not in the green belt. Again, the inspector found that those policies were inconsistent with the MPPF and as such reduced the weight that could be attributed to them. The setting of listed buildings, that was considered to be... Members refused on the basis that there were substantial harms to the listed building. Now, the inspector found less than substantial harm and found that the benefits of the scheme outweighed that harm. And that less of substantial harm was as a result of the loss of the space around the listed buildings. Obviously, he attached a lot of weight to housing delivery and the fact that the council does not currently have a five-year housing line supply as required by the MPPF. He also attached weight specifically to the provision of particular types of housing as well, so family housing specifically, affordable housing. And he also attached weight to the economic benefits of the scheme as well. And in doing so, granted outline planning provision for up to 85 dwellings. That's it, Chair.
Thank you for that, Adam. So can I ask the committee to note the contents of that report? Thank you. And say thank you for your contributions this afternoon. The date and time of the next meeting is Tuesday, the 19th of October at 2pm. Thank you very much.